Columbia County Board of Commissioners February 20th, 2024 meeting order. Yes, your microphone's on.
Yes, sir.
Ask Commissioner Minger to open us with the invitation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll bow your heads with me. Lord, thank you so much for the beautiful day we've had and for the great weather we are experiencing and be with us as we get ready for spring and all that comes with it in this area. Be with us tonight as we go through this agenda and all the items on it. Not all of these issues are easy to deal with, but help us to deal with each vote in wisdom and in truth. In your name we pray. Amen.
Camp for the pledge. Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Ministers, you have the minutes from the February 6th, 2024 meeting in your packet. If you've got a chance to read and agree with them, I'll accept the motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept these as presented. Second?
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Ask Mr. Johnson if the agenda was approved. Not here, so I'm approving it like it is. I know he's on the way.
There's no changes.
I know we have some youth leadership here. Columbia County Youth Leadership, if you'll stand up, tell us, give us your name and what school you go to. Welcome. Welcome. Glad you're here. Actually, it'd be a quick meeting, I think. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Item on this agenda has been through the necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda, so if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept one motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to the debate. Mr. Skinner, you have the first motion.
Yes, sir. File VA 240201. I make a motion to approve the request for variance for property located Tax Map 001A, parcel 204, to accommodate an existing detached garage and proposed construction of a second detached garage, subject to the conditions enumerated in the February 1st, 2024 Planning Commission report.
Second?
This is requested to change the setbacks required. They do have an existing detached garage here. They're looking to install another detached garage here. Currently, requirements are 10-foot side setbacks. As you can see by the drawing here, we have 6-foot for the proposed 12-by-20 shed here, our carport, I guess you could call it, 8-foot off. It does not have to meet the 10-foot side setback requirements because it's less than 400 square feet. However, the other two are required to meet it. Also, the front setback is not being met. This is a small lot on the lake. There is no welts for them to put these garages, so staff recommended and Planning Commission agree that the side setbacks will be reduced 5 feet and the front setback reduced to 30 feet.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. No matters?
No legal matters tonight.
No requests for review by committee, and we have public comments. Finley? Would you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Finley. We live at 6287 Harlem Grove Town Road in Harlem. I've got my neighbor here, Brian Claussen, with me. Captain, forgive me, this is my first commission. Our biggest issue, we have issue with the Uchi Creek Sewer Project that's coming from Harlem to Grove Town. We know it's coming. We have absolutely no desire to standing in the way of the project. Our question is the routing of the project. To make a long story short, there is a property owner that owns 287 acres behind us that does not live on the property, does not reside on the property at all, that keeps her horses there. My neighbor and I, and we each have a neighbor on each side of us, the four of us, we're two in the middle. The line is coming across Uchi Creek onto four properties, his neighbor, my neighbor, myself, and my neighbor, and going back over Uchi Creek, continue through Harlem Grove Town Road. Our biggest argument from day one is why not put it on the other side of the creek? And again, this has nothing to do, we have no issue with the property owner over there at all, no hidden agenda, there's nothing, it just made no sense, walk across the creek and put it on our side and go back, continue down the path you're going. The initial meeting we went to that was, I think, was at the Water Works Department near Grove Town, was, I think, April of last year? After the meeting, we proposed, we asked them, we had all the maps spread out everywhere, and we asked them, why can't you just continue down where you're going? We knew right then that they had already spoken to that property owner and made arrangements because of her desire, utilize the property for a horse trail rides on. So what they've done as a result of that, they've increased roughly 20% the length of the line, point A to point B, they couldn't continue on. They're having to dig deeper to maintain the grain elevation for the sewer line, it's a gravity-fed sewer. And our biggest argument from day one was if the initial exposure to the public official meeting, to introduce them to the idea, routing, engineering that's been conducted, why weren't we part of the conversations with this property owner prior to that first meeting? That's never really been addressed, never really been answered. We've had several meetings, we've been going back and forth here on this. We've had folks to come out to the property. We have explained every argument we could possibly come up with, and at every meeting that we've been with, we've left with the idea that we've made some progress towards possibly getting this resolved. Nothing's happened. No explanations as to why that I can recall, keep in mind, this has been going on for quite a while. These properties are properties that we actually have homes on, we live on. I've got nine acres, my neighbor's got 10, there's property on both sides. The guy next to me just bought the 10 acres, and the week after he bought it, he gets a letter from the county that they're bringing the sewer line through. Now, because they're crossing the creek and adding and increasing costs, now they have to have an egress and regress issue because it's landlocked. If they just continued down the route they're going, they wouldn't have those issues. I go last weekend, I hear heavy equipment in the woods behind my house, and I'm thinking something's going on with the county or something. Well, I go down there, and he's down there with his wife and his kids. This was roughly two weeks ago. He was clearing for his home, clearing, he got tired of waiting on him. I asked him, I said, have you signed anything with the county yet? He said, no. Yesterday morning, I get a text from him that he had just signed with the county miraculously this meeting. Kind of pushed into that, the way this has been done from day one. I don't yield to a bully very much, and I felt bullied the whole time. Everyone involved with this. My neighbor's neighbor on the other side was given an ultimatum roughly two weeks ago to sign papers, sign the easement over, you know, sign the rights to the easement on a certain date, he's familiar with that, prior to this meeting. You know, and it just, it smells from day one. Again, this is nothing against the property owner at all on the other side of the creek. I don't blame her, I wouldn't want it there either. But this person does not live with this property. Horse riding, as she says she does, no, keep in mind, I've been there for 11 years. My wife, I built a walking trail on this property, on my property, it borders, follows the contours of the creek. My wife has seen one person in 11 years on a horse. I just caught, just a couple of months ago, for the first time, on the trail camera that I've had for several years on this property, two people riding a horse. Just miraculously, it just happened. That's not the case, there's too much, there's something else going on here. Someone isn't admitting to it or something. Don't understand why. Biggest explanation we could find out was the wetlands area that's on her property. They're trying to cross the creek to go around it on ours. Got maps with me, we can look it up, I'm sure you've all seen them. You can go around the same wetlands area on her side. I went and invested almost $1,000 in a laser. He and I went out here one night and looked at elevations. There's no difference between the two, none. When Uchi Creek overflows after heavy rains, it floods onto my property because it's right in a bend that completely puts it almost underwater until it drains off. Doesn't happen on the other side, where this supposed flood plain is. Though I think it's extremely obvious that there's been some unfair influence by an adjacent property owner, prominent property owner in this county. No one can explain to me why they can't put it on the other side. My wife's a teacher at Greenbrier, media specialist at Greenbrier, media specialist of the year, teacher of the year, I mean, you name it, she's done it all, golden apple. Very stressful job, I wouldn't last a week. I couldn't do it. She walks this trail every chance she gets. I built it for her, for stress. It's a place we spend a lot of time at. I already have a fiber optic line, AT&amp;T fiber line coming through the property. It was there, we knew it when we bought the property. Now, we're going to have basically a double-lane highway. We're losing beautiful hardwoods, bottom hardwood, bottom, we're losing trees. My neighbor, the seven acres behind him, which is right adjacent to what borders the property, came available a couple of years ago. He paid way above market value to buy their property. He's a disabled vet and has PTSD. He bought this property to keep the peace that he wants at his home. We live and utilize this property almost on a daily basis. I've got, and I know Ms. Couch has seen it, I've got a swing, it sounds crazy, I've got a glider, I've got pictures of me in diapers, hitting by the creek, the place that we spend our life at. Never see, have the option of. I know eminent domain is an extremely powerful law, I get it. I understand the burden of proof is for public use, I get that, I understand. But the same burden of proof for running over there applies there equally as it does to ours. You try to look at it. Additional egress and regress. Comment was made at one of the meetings we went to at our place, that I don't understand what the basis is used for determining what a wetlands area is, but the plants and all the saturation levels or whatever it was, was different. Look at her side of the property, I maintain my side. I actually borrow his tractor to bush hog it, so the entire bottom down there I have almost looks like a golf course because I take care of it, I live there. No one touches the side of the property. Guy next door to me, property he bought, 10 acres, is rectangular in shape, so happens to run down the creek. Now, he's going to build a home, raising kids in a backyard, that's going to put almost clean into the entire length of his property because of this decision. What I understand, he just signed the easement. Guy on the other side, my neighbor, like I said, was given an ultimatum last week to do it, sidestep them to this meeting. Why did that happen? I don't understand. It just smells bad, something to hide somewhere. And I avoid the fact that at the initial meeting, we were told point had already met with this property owner. She did not want it. Guess what? We don't want it on our place either. We didn't know before.
Unfortunately, since it's in litigation, we can't comment, but we can take all your comments.
Litigation? We don't have an attorney representing.
It's in condemnation, condemnation's been.
The appraisal, another thing, this hasn't, wasn't the county's fault, I do not blame the county for this fault at all. Surveying was being done, they sent over drones, a surveying company sent over drones, engineering firm sub someone else from out of town, and on my place, they cut some trees down. Several hundred feet away from where the easement was going to go, they cut, and the trees weren't that big around, but it was in the woods, it wasn't part of planted landscape or anything like that. I didn't discover it until I walked, went down to the part of the property. They had cut trees down to open up the canopy for drone targets. They had planted a target for drones for surveying. A five-minute limit?
I don't know what that was. You're way past your five-minute limit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Five minutes is nowhere near long enough to do this. I could do this all day.
Wait, now, who cut the trees down? The drone company cut trees down on your property without asking you or telling you?
I didn't even know they're on the property. Right, right. I've got pictures. Now, this has already been sold.
I understand they settled that out, right?
Yeah, it's done. The point is, yeah, they cut trees down to open up the canopy to plant the targets that are drones, because nowhere near were easements they were surveying. That netted, I got a certified arborist, apparently an expert in this field, that netted somewhere around $3,300, $3,400 damage to me for a half a dozen trees this big around. What the county is offering us is an insult. They consider the hardwoods that they're cutting down, the oaks and the white oaks, especially on his property. I think it started off somewhere in the neighborhood of a 1,500, went to 2,500, then he had an independent appraiser come back and went back to 1,500. Also, I understand, we're supposed to have the right to meet with this appraiser, that was never mentioned. Only thing that was mentioned to us by the appraiser was permission to come on the property. Nobody, neither appraiser, ever asked us to go with them, ever told us we had the right to say it. They just gave us price. Were they supposed to?
I can't speak as to whether or not it's a good idea, but as far as they have to meet with you, that is a Georgia law, but it's related to buying property and not easements. So if they were going to.
Why would it not be a good idea to meet with them?
I'm not saying it is or isn't, I'm just telling you, you were saying they have to, and I'm just telling you that, that no, unless they're buying your property, they don't have to meet with you.
What I understand, state of Georgia went through the State Supreme Court in 2017 case with property owner. They are required to give us the opportunity to go with them when they.
That is correct. They changed the law after that date, but it's only for buying in what's called fee simple, like full ownership of the property, not an easement. And again, I'm not saying they shouldn't have offered to meet with you.
Well, they were given two different opportunities by two different people. And I mean, what we're being offered, and this isn't about the money, this isn't about the money, it's not, it's not about the money at all. But if you're going to make an offer, make it a fair, a fair offer. I mean, I know certified arborists offered us twice six trees. Y'all are going to take up roughly 300 feet of 100-year-old oats. Crazy. And it's going to be, from what I understand, 30-foot wide, basically a double-lane road. Now drastically changed the way we utilize our property, and still to do not understand why it simply can't be of the same wavelength, elevations are exactly the same. Thank you. I guess I'm used up my time.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Claussen?
I'm Brian Claussen, I live at 6295 Harlem Grove Town Road. You know, so I have a little bit shaking to me, a little bit my voice because I got severe PTSD. I'm 100% disabled combat vet that's been working with the government for over 34 years now. And with that, I bought seven acres on the back of my land because I didn't want anybody to move next to me because of my PTSD, and I basically live out there. I paid $100,000 for that land. I know it probably got ripped off, but it's basically for me and for my, basically my personality to be able to sit out there in peace while I'm having trucks running up and down. My biggest problem is not receiving any explanations why the county talked to the prominent landlord across the street before meeting with us initially exposed to the public on around August, or not August, July 25th, when they asked about the change of the route. I was told that it was not going to change because we're already at 90% design phase. I've been with the military 34 years, I know we do 10%, 25%, 75%, all the way up to 80 and 90. So with this already being at 90%, no one talked to us, no one gave us a chance to voice our opinion. But you want to cross the street and voice your opinion to the prominent landlord. So they had that opportunity. We met with the county three times and asked about why they went to that prominent landlord before us. We got the same answer, we'll get back to you. We're told three times that the contractors will come out and talk to us on why they chose our side of land instead of going to hers. The second meeting we had, we talked about the horses, and this has come from the county in front of our lawyer and their lawyers stating that Mrs., or the prominent landlord will not allow the county come on her land to walk the horse because it may break its ankle. That's exactly what's told me. I asked them, is a horse's ankle more important than my being PTSD and sitting out there? And the same answer was, nah, we'll get back to you, which they never did. The whole time that we've been dealing with this, I could look around, no one talked to me. I know you came out to our land, Couch, appreciate it. I had a little bit of episode out there, but it's because of my PTSD, and that's my solace out there. And I don't think anybody's taking this serious about the PTSD, because when I brought it up many of times, I mean, many times, every time we met, it's like, yeah, okay, we'll get with you, we'll have someone else, we understand. They don't understand. Even when we talked about, you know, rerouting the land, doesn't happen. No one ever talks about it. And you see, that's why I'm still shaking. The most disgusting thing I think that the county did was send me a certified letter on a 23th of December at 5:00, tell me I have five days to tell them and sign my property over, or tell them why I don't want to sign my property over. I planned on going on vacation that time. I had to cancel it because I had, it didn't say five business days, it said five days to answer. This is kind of stuff that they've been doing to me. I got all copies in here. If y'all want to see the copies that the county sent me, and you know, this, how can you do that to a vet on the holidays, the 23rd? Send me a letter saying that you have this time to sign, or we're going to take it from you? So all my vacations canceled, there's nothing I could do. Not only that, it went from $2,900 down to $1,800. Talked to another county or the surveyor, and I talked to the surveyor, and he said, whenever there's problem with hard clients like us, the county comes that surveyor all the time and has him deal with the customers. So isn't that sole source justification? Why are you going to the single person all the time? No one got with me and said, hey, could we have a middle person come out? So you got to remember, this is Christmas, you're just taking my land, basically trying to take my land, ruin my vacation, ruin everything, and then you're saying that we're going to have this other guy, we're going to do away with all your, basically your money and everything else, and we're going to take your land. I also talked to Casey Allen, he came up to me on Thursday, and he told me that the county came to him and stated that they want him to sign over his land, and he said he wanted to wait until he talked to us. And person, individual that told that was Clint Harder, saying that he wanted him to sign over the land, and he said, well, I want to wait on it until after the meeting. He goes, well, we want you to sign by the 16th, we need to have this signed before the meeting. And he reluctantly, he did not sign it because he wanted to wait until today. So this is kind of like the bullying that I feel that's going on to us. It's like the county's ganging up on us. No one's hearing our voice, it's been going on a year now, and this is first chance. Every time we say something and ask to meet with the county, we just get, you know, everybody just ignores us, blows us off, no one wants to listen, then we're like, okay, we're going to do it anyways. So I don't know how they can make up their decision to initially go from the other side of the creek to ours and then just bully us the whole time. And I wouldn't say bullying, but on the 23rd, when they sent me that letter, that was really disgusting. I don't see how you could do that to a vet. I don't think any of you would like to have a letter like that sent to you certified, tell you got five days to sign, or we're just going to take it anyways. So that's pretty much where I'm at. See, I'm still shaking because this is harder than actually, you know, being in war, but I'm not, I don't like being around a lot of people, as everybody knows, but that's my biggest thing. But I do have all the original copies of all the disgusting emails or letters that they sent me certified, where the other landlords didn't get certified letters, just Mr. Finley and I received all the certified letters. So this is directed basically on him and I, and that's pretty much where I got on that. Any questions for me? All right, thank you.
That speaker's mentioned a prominent land owner, do we, was this some elected official that's put undue influence on these folks, or?
Answer that's no, the property owner behind him is Dr. Udomar.
Who?
Dr. Udomar. And she's giving a large, hasn't been fully worked out, but she's giving a large easement, an enormous easement to the county because she has them before this area. And I just, I do want to point out that, for what it's worth, they did have a meeting with the county, I know, because they had it at my office, their attorney, county employees turns well before we finally filed suit.
Brenda? Heidman?
Brenda Heidman, 104 Hot Springs Court, Grove Town. Thank you for meeting with me, this is my first commissioner meeting, and it's nice to be here.
Welcome.
My concern is about the voting machines used in our elections. The Haldeman Report, as you know, gives us new insight into how vulnerable the voting machines are to hacking and how insecure they are. Dr. Haldeman was able to prove that a single poll worker card in the hands of an attacker can compromise the voting machines in an entire county, and there are hundreds of poll worker cards issued during our elections. There are many other ways the voting machine system can be compromised as well, and Dr. Haldeman proves them all. There are too many to be fixed by patches, which can also ultimately be compromised. It's not a secret that the voting machines are compromised, our governor has acknowledged it, the Secretary of State admits there's problems, and so many voters already know this and want election security. People want the removal of voting machines and to use hand-marked paper ballots instead. The vulnerabilities are many and have decreased voter confidence. It's important to have secure elections for everyone. It's important to move now to paper ballot voting method as the upcoming elections are approaching quickly. Our state laws give us the choice to use paper ballots if voting machines are not practical. And these laws clearly state we can use paper ballots. For election security as a whole, the voting machine system has to be removed. I'm asking this Board of Commissions to approve that Columbia County use paper ballots for the upcoming elections of 2024. I have references that you can read and make a more informed decision. These references include links to the Dr. Haldeman Report, a video of a Wayne County Commissioner speaking in favor of paper ballots, the laws about using paper ballots, and a PowerPoint presentation by Garland Favoreto, co-founder of Voter GA. There are many references I can include. I also included my email. I don't expect a decision from you today, but I do look forward to continue talking. And thank you for your time and consideration. Can I give you the references? Thank you.
Chris, do we have the authority to, have the authority to take Columbia County's paper ballots?
The Secretary of State makes the decision of how the voting is to take place and what machine.
Just for the record, I have met Dr. Haldeman. Just for the, for the record, I have met Dr. Holdeman, and I have listened to his presentation, be careful, listened to his presentation, I have my pillow guy, I don't even know his name.
Mike Lindell.
Flew somebody down to meet with me, I said, if you could give us proof, give us anything we can hang our hat on, Columbia County will go to the mat on that. And so thus far, I have nothing that, that is not circumstantial, everything is circumstantial that I have seen. So, we are willing to be the leader in this cause, but so far, it's just been a Alice in Wonderland, I don't think, it's, so far, it's just been a rabbit hole. At any rate, I, I'm very dialed into this, though.
Okay.
Don't have the legal authority to, Columbia County will go to ba, paper ballots.
Okay, I, I expect that we'll meet again, and I have some more evidence, I didn't want to overwhelm everybody with all those references, there is evidence out there.
I'm not here tonight, but I've been glad to meet with you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Andrew Hughes, one-four-seven Gristwood Drive in Martinez. These other issues are much weightier than mine, so, but y'all the representatives, so I thought I'd bring you my complaint, I suppose. Thanks, I'm just gonna read, otherwise I won't hit everything, so please forgive me, but, ladies and gentlemen, I come before you today as a small business owner, a member of this community, and someone who believes in fairness and reason. I stand here with a plea for justice and a call for common sense to prevail. Recently, I found myself in a situation that left me utterly bewildered and disheartened. A simple act of parking my trailer on the street outside of my own home has resulted in a series of punitive actions that I had never imagined possible. A neighbor, seemingly determined to play the role of vigilante, has taken upon themselves to report every instance of my trailer being parked, no matter how brief the stop. I found myself facing a fine of six hundred dollars, not facing, it's been imposed, an amount greater than what I pay myself as the business owner in a full week, and despite investing in all of the necessary equipment to comply with all of the regulations the county has asked me to comply with, I was met with a judge whose decision seemed utterly callous and disproportionate to the offense. Not only was I fined what I think is exorbitantly, but I was also placed on criminal probation, this is a code violation. With the threat of further penalties hanging over my head for the most minor of infractions, this experience has left me questioning the priorities of our county's resources and the fairness of our legal system. Is it truly just for hard-working individuals like myself and others in the county to be subjected to such severe consequences for what amounts to a minor inconvenience to one of my neighbors? I implore you to please consider the gross misuse of taxpayer attention and funds in cases such as mine, and I ask for a thorough investigation into the penalties that I have been subjected to, with the intention to overturn them. Furthermore, I urge you to reassess the codes and regulations in place, ensuring that they are applied with fairness and reason rather than arbitrary severity. I'd ask that we strive for a community where justice is served and compassion and, sorry, with compassion and understanding, and where small business owners and all others are supported rather than burdened by excessive fines and penalties. It seems to me that it is absurd that stopping at my own house for a thirty-minute lunch with my family can result into what is deemed an infraction. I trust in your wisdom and fair, sense of fairness to rectify this situation, and I did ask the judge if I could have lunch with my family and pull my truck and trailer up to the house and stop at the curb for thirty minutes, and I was told no. That's, that would, that would be a violation of my six-month probation. One gentleman in my community. Can I answer any questions about it? I'm, I'm happy to meet, to talk about this.
Anything about the situation?
I can, I can tell you, we can't overturn what a judge's order is, but...
Can you, can you, can you guys work?
I'd be glad to look into it, but I don't know no details.
Yeah, so, so the, the county code right now says that you cannot park a trailer, I think it's on a county right-of-way, for more than twelve hours, and only when you're actively loading or unloading. So, per that language, I can't stop and have lunch with my family, but that's a little silly, and to put someone on six months probation and fine them six hundred dollars for stopping in their neighborhood in front of their house for having done that is nuts.
Have any other business on your property?
No, no, I just, I just run a painting business out of my house, so like, most of the time...
Is equipment in your yard quite often?
No, it's, it's almost always at, uh, the customer's location, right? We have a trailer with ladders on it and equipment inside.
How many code, uh, code enforcement issues have you been involved in?
This is the only one.
One time? Code enforcement hadn't been by your property?
No, I spoke to Chris from code enforcement one time with a warning, and then one time after that for a ticket. I thought I was gonna get like a seventy-five dollar fine, I went and I bought a hitch that lowered the front of my trailer so the back wouldn't scrape as I pulled it in, um, I, I did everything I could, and then I went in to, to the court date, thinking that if I just signed off, uh, no contest, that I would be facing, what amounted to maybe a seventy-five dollar fine, and I lick my wounds and move on. But you have to sign that before you ever hear what your penalty's gonna be. So to come at it with six hundred dollars, after I said I've rectified this situation, the code, the gentleman who was effectively my prosecutor from the code office said, he told the judge in that moment that it's been rectified, he's gone by, the problem doesn't exist anymore, and still, six months of probation, I might have to go report on Friday, and I'm just bewildered, and I haven't talked to a single person in the county, beyond this judge, I suppose, that thinks this is reasonable. I, I, I could, there's a lot of things I could do in this county to break the law and face a lesser, um, penalty than what I'm facing for parking my trailer for lunch. So, yeah, I just, I ask, I mean, I, I really think that that, I, I'm concerned about obviously that one line item in the code, um, I'd ask that, look at that, and maybe we can amend it to have just a little bit of clarity that short stops are permitted. The day I went to court, oddly enough, the county was doing repairs on the road, and there were unattended, empty trailers, unhooked up, mine was hooked up to my truck. I thought that would be okay, it wasn't, but there were just a few of them in the street, I took a picture to try and hopefully show the judge, like, this is not even, I, I'm up against it here.
So your business is home-based, the residential end?
Yeah, it's truck-based, I would say, but I gotta park the truck somewhere.
But it's parked at your residence, uh, residence?
Yep, yep, and I, I asked, can I, can I park, like, I, the, the code gentleman, he wrote me a ticket, and I said, can I park, it's a sixteen-foot enclosed trailer, it's very clean, it's not a ratty old trailer, I asked, can I park it in the front yard, like, just right in the front yard, so, and I asked if it's off the, like, four or six feet off per the right-of-way, and he said, yep, that's okay, it would look so much worse. But that's the preferable result, according to the county, and, and then just burdening folks with, with what I think is really, really silly, um, the offense and the crime, or, sorry, the penalty and the crime here don't really, they, they don't weigh out against each other. And, and I think that this code violation, it, it carries with it up to six months in jail and up to a, a thousand-dollar fine. Six months in jail for parking your trailer on the street.
Explain to the judge that you don't park it there overnight, ever, and, and he wouldn't...
No, no, not, not ever, I had, until I got the warning. I got the warning, now I understood there was a code issue, so we started fixing that, but it, anytime it was parked, I mean, I did a public records request for all of the complaints, it's all from one gentleman on the other side of the neighborhood, and it, they're all from his email, and the rest of the pictures, if I'm not mistaken, I went through it, all have my truck hooked up to it, cause at night, I started, I started backing it in.
After your initial warning, you didn't park it in the street, or?
Not if it was hooked up, not if it was not hooked up to the truck.
But it was in the street. I'm just trying to understand what you're saying.
Yes, 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 in the street, sorry, I just never comprehended that pulling your truck up, parking in your neighborhood against the curb on the right-hand side of the road, to go inside and have a thirty-minute lunch with your family, was a result in effectively criminal action against you. Just, that's not the Columbia County I, I thought I lived in. I'm just so surprised by it, and I think it's, 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 again, I haven't talked to anybody that thinks this is a reasonable response to one person's complaints. He doesn't have an HOA, so what does he do? Calls the county. Y'all can look into that, like, maybe even we're just talking to the head of the code enforcement division, or however it works here, and just saying, hey, look, are we really throwing people under the bus in front of a judge here who throws a six hundred dollar fine at them? I mean, I can show you my pay stubs, five hundred dollars weekly, that's all I get. I'm the, I promise I'm the lowest-paid person in my company. There's some benefits that come with being the boss, but the pay right now isn't one of them. I even told the judge that, I pleaded with him for reduction in the fine, and he said, this is a reduction from a thousand to six hundred.
Look into it.
Thank you so much, have a great day.
Executive session, a few items here that we can write here and now.
Yes, sir, I have one item from the management infernal services committee. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the employment contract with Chaney Thompson Eldridge as the executive director of the development authority.
Back up. Questions? All of you ever raise your right hand?
I have three from the public works services department. I make a motion to approve sixty-one thousand three hundred dollars to Doctor's Hospital of Augusta LLC for parcels zero-seven-two-A, zero-six-two, and zero-seven-two-A, zero-six-one, and forty-six thousand four hundred dollars to John and Tanya Eller, parcel zero-six-seven-seven-three-seven to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road widening project. Second.
Continue to work, we're down to, we've got about seventy percent of our acquisitions completed, one way to go.
Questions? Ever raise your right hand?
I make a motion to approve two thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars to Sue Ricky and Nancy Gorrich, parcel zero-seven-two-A, two-five-four, for additional moving costs.
Second.
For tenants in a house that we had to purchase for the road widening, we had to pay the moving company to relocate.
I make a motion to approve fourteen thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents to Monte and Nicole Holt, parcel zero-seven-one, zero-zero-two-K for additional moving costs.
Second.
Again, had to relocate tenants after we purchased the house, these were the homeowners, they moved out of state, we had to cover the cost of moving them.
Say we needed to get Ricky and Nancy to help them with their moving.
I think they moved, these folks moved to Tennessee, I believe, so it's quite a haul.
Harry's. Believe that's the last item, except sure one motion needs to be made and we're done.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All of you ever raise your right hand? We're done.